Well, Wilder will lead us in the pledge and Commissioner Anderson or Dempsey will lead us in our pledge. Thank you.
I have your heads with me. Lord, we want to thank you for another great day, great day in this state. Thank you for all the many blessings that you showed our way in Columbia County. Ask that you please look over all those that look over us, look out for us on the urgency of our community. Best that you guide our hands, guide our minds as we address these issues, try to make the best decisions, all parties involved. Face tonight, ask all these things.
Pledge allegiance by United States of America, the Republic which stands one nation, God, Israel, and for all. Thank you. Be seated. I'd ask you to remind you to please silence your cell phones. We do have all five commissioners present tonight. Gentlemen, you've had an opportunity to review the minutes from the last meeting. Are there any amendments, additions, or changes that you would like to propose to the minutes? If they're none, I need a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries five zero. Gentlemen, we do have a couple of changes to the agenda tonight. Mr. Vice Chair.
Mr. Chair, I move to add item H two A, two items to H two A. First is massage operators license Catherine Keaton and second is massage operators license Connie Roundtree. Also like to add item H two H initiation of text amendment.
Gentlemen, are there any other additions to the agenda? If not, we'll need a motion for the approval of the amended agenda.
Chairman, I move we approve the agenda as amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries five zero. Before we begin tonight, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the planning commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. The decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the commissioners for final action on October fifteenth, two thousand nineteen at six P. M. In these chambers. You wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Elizabeth Metzger and she'll give you a request to speak for them. Some of you know this, some of you don't. This is a less formal environment here. If you have something that you'd like to add to the commentary during the public hearing session or the public hearing portion of this meeting or in public comments at the end of the meeting, raise your hand. We'll ask you to come up to the microphone and give your name and home address and we'll give you three to five minutes to give us your opinion. We'd ask that you not be repetitive in your remarks or be repetitive remarks that have come before us earlier. That being said, let's move to our first item. Mr. Butler filed RZ one nine zero eight zero three.
Senator Sheriff's, a request for rezoning from RA and M. One to PRD on two hundred sixty five point nine four acres along Baker Place Road. This location of the property again is bisected by Baker Place Road, just north of its intersection with Wrightsboro Road. You have Canterbury Farms over here, Road Town is to the south. For the zoning, again, you do have RA and M. One with the existing parcel. First everything to the south is RA, you have some R. Two. Then again, actually, the west is a very similar zoning as well. Then to the east, you have Canterbury Farms was a planning and development. An aerial view of the site, again, currently undeveloped, heavily wooded site. This is the existing site along Baker Place Road and also Canterbury Farms Parkway. Again, this is the end of that road and you can see where it would continue home. This is the plot of the property. So the initial submittal, we've been looking at this since August, our beginning of August. So this is the initial submittal. It's had quite a few changes, as we'll see here in a moment. The revised plan calls for seven hundred fifty one, seven hundred fifty one units of residential development. It's broken down into two hundred four townhomes and five hundred four single family lots. In terms of the development itself, you do have a roundabout here at Baker Place Road and you have a spine road that goes back Canterbury Farms Parkway and you have a breakdown of all the different lots. In terms of those, you have the fifty foot lots, which are shown kind of blue color on here. You have the sixty foot lots. In terms of fifty foot lots, those are proposed counts two hundred twenty three. Sixty foot lots are shown in yellow. Those are one hundred sixty six lots and the seventy foot lots are showing kind of the peach color there. Those are one hundred fifty eight lots, one hundred fifty eight lots. The ones that are in blue are the proposed townhomes. This is a fairly, not necessarily unique, but a fairly similar layout where you have the lots grouped by size throughout the entire development and with some townhouses thrown into the mix. In terms of the development itself, you do have, let's see, the lot sizes, you have five thousand square feet for the fifty foot lots, six hundred square feet for the sixty foot lots, eight thousand one hundred twenty five for the seventy foot lots. Setbacks are supposed to be forty feet minimum from the street center line to fifty feet from the property line with the fifty foot right away. Rear setbacks proposed at ten feet and side setbacks are proposed at seven and a half feet throughout the development. Advocate has requested to have five foot setbacks on lots one hundred feet of a park or trailhead and also on lots that can look at master bedroom or master bedroom down floor plan. All drive was built minimum twenty feet in depth. Advocate is proposing two hundred four townhomes in three separate areas. And those will be in blocks three or four with all in use including garages, which means they exceed the fifty percent requirement of the PRD. Those would have a width range of sixteen to forty feet for lots, lot size of one thousand two hundred eighty square feet. And again, as with any townhome, you're going to have zero foot setbacks between the lots themselves, twenty feet between the individual buildings, a rear setback at ten feet and forty feet from the front. In terms of the actual architecture of the site, actually, let me go back. So you have, one thing with the plan too, this is a PRD and they do have an extensive pedestrian plan right here. You see the red, that's the sidewalks throughout the development. You also have trails throughout in blue. In terms of the PRD, you do have extensive parks throughout this development. That is how they're kind of getting at the request for seven and a half foot setbacks. They have eighteen parks throughout, a very large area here that has playing fields, pool, that sort of thing. Again, a lot more of park, usable park space throughout the whole development. And again, that is every single area of the site, you know, has parks that are very nearby or within the, within each section. One of the things with the, with one of the conditions of staff, they do have active passive parks within this. We'd like them to kind of define more what that means at the plat stage. In terms of green space, again, quite a lot of green space on the site. Again, it's about thirty seven percent of the overall acreage for the site itself. In terms of street design, you do have street trees throughout. Again, this is a PRD that will be required. There would be a sidewalk along Canterbury Farms Parkway. And again, shows you that example of amenities throughout the site. Also the phasing plan, again, you start off with the first phase would be here and then you move through it throughout the development for a total of five phases. And again, the house examples, they have provided some architectural style. This application for PRD, we normally do see a architectural book that goes with it, character book per se. They have chosen to provide us with some examples, but again, they're using the parks as their justification. In staff's opinion, you know, that does, that's a little different, but they have gone a little above and beyond. So we are in favor of the seven and a half foot sized setbacks for the house examples. So one thing with the setbacks though, to kind of get into the review of it, they request seven and a half foot setbacks for the entire development with some of them being five feet. We have given five feet in the past with some standards that go with that and they require you to have, if you're close to a park, you can have it with some architectural requirements attached to that. With this one, we are attaching the same, the same conditions. We do, we are increasing it to six feet. One of the reasons for that, we've seen recently, as you actually see tonight, the five foot setbacks seem to be a bit of an issue. We're having builders that are building over those lines. It requires building code or the fire protection changes at that point. We're requesting a six foot setback to give a little more leeway for everybody in terms of the actual development of the site itself. But again, we are allowing those six foot setbacks or having a condition for those six foot setbacks for a certain number of the site. In terms of, this shows the fire separation distance as well. Again, this shows your five feet of greater, you can have unlimited openings. There's really no change. Once you get closer, you know, here, you have your, your fire protection is required. You have a limited amount of openings and you get even further, you know, less than three feet, there's no openings permitted. That brings us lastly to, we, some of the issues too with the site plan or the sites themselves will be more covered with the concept plans side of it. I was going to get into that. Again, there's some things that are more, we can kind of move it to a plating stage to make the decision, but there is a condition attached to it. So one of the things that the staff really has a concern about is the townhomes. Again, the future land use map of this area's neighborhoods, that is predominantly single family neighborhoods. It's very clear in Vision twenty thirty five that those are what are desired here. You can argue that a PRD, yes, it includes permitted uses or a townhouse, but again, you still have, that does not mean you have to allow them in a PRD. And again, with the neighborhood, the neighborhood character area, very clear Vision twenty thirty five does not permit this type of use. So that's one, one of staff's conditions is that the townhomes are removed from this request. The second one, that's kind of another aspect of it, back to the concept plan. So one of the concerns from staff is that this, this is the first phase here. That is a little over two hundred houses. You have the second phase as well, a little over four hundred, give or take. I want to think, one of the issues there is that you do have, you only have one entrance to the site. Now, there is one down here, but again, we don't quite know if that's going to be developed. So there is a condition that requires at three hundred lots, they will have to have a secondary entrance, whether that be Wrightsboro Road through these southern connections here or to Canterbury Farms Parkway. That again, comes from the Greenpoint Development, which also had a very similar condition, three hundred lots, there is a second entrance. In terms of that, staff has recommended approval with conditions of the request for the rezoning. Again, the proposed townhomes are not included in the rezoning request to the PRD. There is a cemetery on the site. We are requesting that be delineated with a deck or a fence. They have provided information that they, that it will be a separate part, a part of the development. Also provided a study, within that study that says, hey, there are a lot of the graves on this site. And that is why we're requesting that condition. Third condition there is that the development is limited to plating of three hundred lots. So the second full access point is via the Wrightsboro Road or Canterbury Farms Parkway and the connection shall utilize public roads. The northern part of the development shows a connection into the western portion of another, of another parcel. That is one that is probably eight years down the road of actually being developed, that portion of the site. Again, staff, yes, there needs to be a future connection there, but we would prefer it to be on the northern side of that, of that section. However, we are saying that, you know, at preliminary plat, we can figure out where that location is because again, if that is five, 10 years down the road, we'll know more about the development of the adjacent parcel, make a more informed decision at that point. Again, with the proposed twenty five foot lot furniture, there are some concern from staff on that. We are saying, look, we can probably figure out a solution to this at the actual engineering stage and we can't just approve it as is. So we'll require it to come back to you guys at preliminary plat after reviewing it by staff. With lot furnaces, again, they had it stated as it was from the, at the minimum building line, this would be fifty feet or the fifty foot lots have averaged throughout, throughout the phase of fifty feet. This would allow them to fluctuate between, you know, maybe going down to forty seven up to fifty three. Six foot lots have a similar requirement as well as, as well as seventy foot lots. That'll be determined at plating. And again, this is the six foot setback requirement is here. Again, it shows you that it has the ability to do this at, at a preliminary plat review. And you have the requirement that has to achieve a unique traditional character to satisfaction of staff in the planning commission. This gives them the ability to go a little above and beyond and actually do that. And that's where, again, it comes back to you guys to approve. Also have one that speaks to the air conditioning units. If it's less than seven and a half feet for the setback, they have to be located at the front or the rear and they have to be screened to locate at the back or the front of the unit. Again, each building will include a signed approval letter from the ARB. Again, that is something that's very, very common in all of our PRDs. They traditionally, traditionally have architectural requirements. So those are things that staff really doesn't need to be reviewing for a house. That's where the ARB comes into play. They are showing that, you know, they have, they have reviewed it in compliance. The last one there is that parks might be reduced below the eighteen shown on the concept plan. Now, parteries will determine at preliminary plat, they're all developing, it's clear at least four of each type. So it lets them choose, they have to have four of each type and they have six of them they can do whatever they want with. And lastly, have a condition for water and sewer, all permanent structures must be a minimum of twenty feet from a water main. That's more of a concept plan, but they attach to the rezoning. That includes staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions to staff?
We, do we know the extent of the cemetery? Is it marked?
It is shown on the concept plan. I don't remember the exact size of it. It is right here and it has been delineated by a archaeologist. They have a report that was within their, within their request. It's very thorough and it's one that's, it's very good.
I think it's an interesting report to read. I've never seen one of those before.
Very good.
In the, just said something about the AC units. You put an AC unit in front of the house. That, that's something that's been done before?
It's not common. It's one of those that it could be done, that's why we included the extra part of that condition. If it is done, again, if you have to have the space for it, that's where it would go.
PRD is kind of a, of a new zoning classification. We haven't done many of those. Would you mind just going over the high points of PRD and what they are and what they include and that kind of thing?
Yeah, I mean, it's basically what it is, is a planned unit development minus the commercial part purely for your residential development. It allows you to have smaller setbacks than if you do a really good design. In our opinion, they've done that in this case. It lets you kind of work with staff on getting type of setbacks that you, they work if you in turn do a little more typical. It does require street trees, sidewalks, it requires a fifty foot buffer around it. It is for, it is basically to make high quality residential development as, as a purpose behind it. That was, you know, it's intended to, essentially, if you had most of Riverwood would be a PRD, River Island could have been a PRD, what else? Jones Creek would have been a PRD totally because it has, it does like to have like a golf course within it and Jones Creek would have been a PRD. It's just a different classification, but again, it has a high quality, a high level of design attached to it.
Intent was to replace R. Three?
I wasn't here when it was actually written, but that was, again, that was, the intent was to replace the ones that are allowed for more dense development, but don't have those, those designer cars attached to it.
Okay. Do you have any other questions?
I've got a question to kind of hit me looking at the picture one more time. I keep forgetting to ask. It's the circle, the traffic circle. What kind of diameter are we looking at there? Is it going to be a little dinky one like Riverwood has? Is it going to be a, you know?
The one here?
Yeah, is it going to be a show enough traffic circle like Pumpkin Center?
Those are, that's going to be at least a hundred feet wide.
Traffic circle works just fine.
It's dinky. And that's, that's on the developer, the builder's going to, going to build the circle. It's going to be on the county dime. And now the, back to the PRD, I do have questions. The setbacks can be less than ten, but there needs to be a mix, right? There needs to be some tens in there as well to do a PRD.
There doesn't have to be. You can request fives, all tens, all nine point threes. Don't have to have a mixture.
Looking at the AC unit, it's all shaded in it, not that way, but I figured that'd kill the grass, water. I don't see how grass survives without sun and a lot of sun gets in there. Chains. The AC units sit on concrete plats, right? Fusion and things.
Over time, yes. Definitely the possibility.
Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Ivy, I think you're the applicant. Would you come forward? Give us your name and home address.
Mark Ivy, seven thirty Stonecrest Lane, Appling, Georgia. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners. Now, I don't know what else you want me to add. I've got points on every condition. If you want me to go ahead and go through those or if y'all want to ask me questions and see if there's any other public comment, then I come back and do it all at one time.
Why don't we see if there's any other public comment and let you come up after that and address that?
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Buddy? All right. Mr. Ivy?
On the.
Bring you back up. I understand you had a meeting and you've gone through and you've got a couple of points.
In all of my history of doing rezoning, I think this is the first time I've ever stood up here and not had anybody in the audience stand up in opposition. So I hope, I hope y'all realize that and understand that the public has embraced the project. We had a public meeting with the Canterbury Farms Homeowner Association. We had seven people show up. We were streamed on Facebook Live unbeknownst to us. If they'd have just asked, I'd have said, set your camera up. Got zero comments after that meeting from anybody. So the surrounding communities that we've talked with are embracing this project. And we started off with the original design. We had conversations at the staff level with the spine road coming through and it's a lot to build. You know, Russell, you were talking about the, the traffic circle. That's an expensive traffic circle to build. And when the county said, we're not going to participate in a spine road, I had to figure out how to be able to afford that. And the way I afford it is density. I have to get the density to be able to do it. But if I'm going to get density, I also have to do a quality development, put the parks in there and do a good layout. We feel like, I don't know of any other neighborhood that's got eighteen parks shown on their plan. One of the feedback we get from our buyers when we go to HOA meetings is, yeah, we love the pool, that was great, but there's nowhere for our kids to go throw a football or run. And so that's when you saw in the layout, the activity fields, that was one of the things that we're adding to the neighborhood because we get that feedback from our buyers is we want, we want the ability to, for our kids to play. So we think we've done a good job land planting this neighborhood out. Understand that these type of neighborhoods are very long term. This is probably a, you know, best case scenario, eight years, worst case scenario, fifteen years. Neighborhoods like this, you usually go through a cycle or two in the economy. So it's hard for us to know today, you know, everything that we're going to encounter through the project. So we spend a lot of time trying to figure that out and we try to build in flexibility in this document because we don't know what's going to happen. But I understand from your side as well, you want to make sure that certain things are going to happen. So we've tried to accommodate your desires and our needs for the flexibility as well. So, you know, I think the biggest contention is townhomes. We'll talk about in the Vision twenty thirty five that townhomes aren't allowed in the neighborhood character area. But if you look at the map and look at what is shaded as neighborhood character area, there are neighborhoods everywhere that have townhomes in them that have that same shading. Canterbury Farms has townhomes. Ed Creek has townhomes. Kalari has townhomes. Crawford Creek has townhomes. Riverwood Plantation, townhomes. So a lot of your major master plan communities have a townhome component to the community. I think when the Vision twenty thirty five plan was, was being done, everybody, when they say townhomes, everybody immediately thinks, oh, these are the, what used to be sixty nine ninety nine specials and now they're ninety nine nine specials. You know, just to line them up, pack them in as tight as you can and build them as cheap as you can. And that's not what gets put in master plan communities. If you think about what's been built as townhomes in master plan communities, that's the type of townhome you typically want, right? I mean, they look nice, they're well maintained, they pay into the master association, they pay into their association. Master association, there's seven hundred houses out there that's going to hold those two hundred accountable to make sure that they're maintained and done right so it doesn't affect their property value. When Dad went in the building business in nineteen eighty four, his first project was Joshua Tree Villas. Then he moved across the road and built Creek Walk over off the pass. And so if you ride through those communities today, they're thirty years old now, they still look nice. And it's all because of how they were built within a community. They've got, they've got covenants on them and they're well maintained. And that's what we do on ours. There'll be covenants with our townhomes that says these will be maintained, exteriors are maintained by the association and everybody's held accountable. As part of your due structure is to pressure wash them from time to time. Roof needs to be replaced, replace the roof. So in addition to that, when, when we do townhomes, we haven't hidden these off in some corner somewhere. They're front and center. They're right here closest to the amenity area because that's where we wanted, you know, you got the most density there. We need to put it close to the amenities so they can walk, be able to get there. But when you put them front and center in your neighborhood like this, you got to do a good job with them to make sure they're done right. So we, we believe that the neighborhood that we've laid out and what we've proposed in townhomes are justified. They're needed to be able to get the density that's needed to, to build this spine road and build this traffic circle. The existing residents of Canterbury Farms want a, a back exit to be able to get out of their neighborhood. When, when Canterbury Farms is finished, there'll be about eleven hundred houses in there. That's a lot of traffic to, to go out one way. But we, we need the density to be able to support the cost of those infrastructure improvements that are going to be needed to, that, that not only benefit our neighborhood, but benefit the eleven hundred homes in Canterbury Farms as well. If we can't get the density to support that, then I can't build the spine road, I can't build the traffic circle, the project just probably goes away. And then they're left with no chance for a, for a back exit without the county building it at that point. But there's an opportunity for us to work together, you know, and maybe get that thing built like it needs to be done. So we would argue that townhomes are justified, that we've done a good job planning them and that they're needed there. Before I go to the next one, I'll answer questions about townhomes.
So it's townhomes or nothing, basically is what you're saying?
If I don't have the density, I can't pay for the infrastructure. I've got, you know, I've got to put a pump station in or we're working with Maybaum on a pump station to serve this property. You've got the spine road to build. That traffic circle is probably a half million dollar traffic circle. You know, you can't do that without having density to, to support it. The second one was the cemetery. We would like that condition removed, not that we don't, we might not fence the cemetery, but we want the ability for us to choose that we want to fence it and for us to choose what kind of fence we might want to put around it. It's front and center when you turn into the townhome section. So we want to be able to be the ones that control that. There are cemeteries in a lot of neighborhoods right now that are not fenced. There's one in the, in Amberley, it's not fenced. You don't even notice the cemetery there, it's just in the woods, but there, it's there. Sometimes when you fence it, calls attention to it and now all of a sudden, kids want to go, oh, it's a cemetery, let's go see what that's all about, when if it just stays woods, maybe nobody ever fools with it. So we would just like the ability to have flexibility for us to choose whether we want to fence the cemetery or not.
So the cemetery is currently wooded? It's a wooded area?
Wooded, there's trees growing in it. You look at the, if you look at the aerial map, it's a little section of hardwood trees. It's got pine trees all the way around it. That's what first drew our attention to it was, got to be something there for those hardwoods to be left because this site's been, timber's been growing on it since the mid fifties. It's been cut and harvested, cut and harvested a couple of times. We would like to, like to have that one removed. Item three, limiting it to three hundred platted lots. One of the issues we run in with platted lots is to understand how we phase development. When we do this, we try to put the lots on the ground that we think will take us two years to build. If I go in with a phase one, that's a, you know, a hundred and fifty lots and then I come back with a phase two, that's a hundred and fifty lots, all of a sudden it triggers, I got to put a, you know, a second entrance in. Well, I might only have at that point a hundred houses built. But we would rather it be tied to the houses. Then you say, well, how do we do that? Well, that's a difficult question. Well, if I'm typically going to keep a two year supply of lots on the ground and, and you want it to be when there's three hundred houses, maybe say, all right, when you plat four hundred and fifty lots, then we want the left turn lane or a second, a second entrance to be put in place. And if that is going to be a requirement, we want the flexibility. Along Baker Place Road, we originally had a second entrance on Baker Place Road. But in meetings with county staff on the transportation side, they suggested, well, hey, why don't you just, we'd rather see all the traffic be pushed to the traffic circle and that way it's better utilized there. But we would like the right to, if we decide, okay, we need a second exit, but it doesn't make sense to make these other connections yet, I can put a second exit there on the south side of that property. That would serve, serve as my connection point. I don't know that that's what we would do. We just, like I said, we just need options and flexibility because we don't know what it's going to be like to get to that point. So that's our concern with the, with the, with this having the second connection. Number four, the location of the future connection. Originally, when we were showing a spine road going all the way through and hoping the county would participate, it did connect to that, that northern side or western, the or western, uh, the western side of the property, uh, there close to I-20. But when, when the county decided, "Hey, we're not going to participate, you're on your own," then we, we, we had to rework our layout. And so, we're not, we're not showing a connection there anymore. That parcel has tremendous frontage along Baker Place Road already. It's really a narrow sliver right there, and I'm not sure it would be a connection that's used anyway. Um, so, you know, we don't mind looking at that with staff at some point if it makes sense, but I don't want to have to lose three lots to put a stub out for something, somebody else that may never, ever connect because they've got so much frontage along Baker Place Road. Um, that's my concern. You take three lots away, you know, it's, my infrastructure cost was the same. So, that's, that just makes it even harder to make the numbers work. Um, so, we would like that, that condition, uh, struck off as well, which was Condition Four. Um, Condition Five, I, I, we have done this before, and this was the, the, the narrowing of the frontage of the lot to twenty-five feet when you get in these tight corners. We actually did this, um, in Brantley Cove a little bit, and it worked fine. Uh, you have to, you can't bring a sixteen-foot wide driveway all the way out through a twenty-five-foot frontage. So, you have to work to, to narrow that driveway up. And I don't have a problem with working with staff to look at all that at the time of preliminary plat. We, we'll know then where water and sewer services are going to go, where power transformers are going to go, and we can figure out how to work around those. We just, it helps us tremendously to pick up those, couple of lots in those corners, um, with the same amount of road frontage. So, I don't have a problem with working with, uh, working with staff on those, on those corners on Number Five. Uh, Number Six, on the lot frontages, um, what we're trying to accomplish there is when, when we develop a neighborhood, we have a book of plans. So, those plans may range in width. So, if I'm going to do a, a section that's going to be twenty-two-hundred to twenty-six-hundred square feet, those plans aren't going to be all the same width. So, every now and then, we're able to adjust those lot frontages a little bit to be able to, to make it work a little bit better. And we don't always do it, but we just like the flexibility to do it. And my only concern is, is Will has left in here, it still has to average fifty feet. Well, if I, if I take one lot and I just say, "I'm going to ma-" I decided I got, hey, I've got one plan that's a little wider. So, I need to make these, these, uh, I need to make six of these lots fifty-three feet wide. All of a sudden, I don't average fifty. Or maybe I have one plan that, golly, this plan is just a whole lot narrower. I can make six lots forty-eight feet wide, I don't average fifty anymore. So, we, we would just like the ability to kind of work within, you know, what we have in the, in the, in the PRD narrative and not have to necessarily average, um, that frontage. And then, Number Seven, um, the, the six, six-foot setbacks. You know, one of the things we looked at when, when Green Point was approved, Green Point was approved, um, with seven-and-a-half-foot setbacks and then five-foot setbacks, um, around parks. And I haven't seen the exact condition to, to know that it, hey, this is also tied to architectural of the houses and other things. What, what we were trying to do is, is when we get around those parks, just trying to get a little more bang for our buck with, with reducing those setbacks down. If there's some compromising we need to do there to be able to keep the townhomes, we're willing to do that. You know, if we need to say, "Hey, let's," and I heard a comment about varying setbacks and different things like that, you know, maybe the compromise is, "Hey, you guys can do townhomes, but you need to do, on your fifty-foot lots, let's do six-foot setbacks. On your sixties, let's do eight-foot. On your seventies, let's do ten-foot setbacks." Um, you know, if it keeps the townhomes, you know, we're willing to do that, um, to, to make that work. If that's, you know, what you want to accomplish with a, a varying, each section looks like as the houses get bigger, you've got more space between the houses. We, we can accommodate, accommodate that, um, and make that, make that happen. Um, you know, there was a, a comment in the, in the narrative about, uh, master plan, mastered bedroom down plans. You know, one of the issues you run into sometimes is when you've got a square foot range that you're going for, uh, within that, within that section of lots. But you, you want to try to get a mastered-down plan in there. Well, that mastered-down plan, I've got a whole nother bedroom, I've got a fit downstairs plus master bath closets and things. Sometimes that plan just needs to be a little bit wider. So, what we were trying to figure out is how to do that and just allow, if it's a master bedroom down plan, allow the setback to be reduced a little bit to accommodate that mastered-down plan. We talked extensively with, with Will and with Matt on that, trying to figure out how to make it work. And I think at the end of the day, I don't know that there's a good way to make it work. But it sure would help break up that street skate some where you're not seeing, you know, all two-story plans. It would allow us to get some four-and-a-half plans mixed in. Um, Number Eight, uh, this is talking about the, um, the air conditioner units. Um, we, we have put air conditioner unit, we've never done an air conditioner on the front of the house, uh, with the exception of if you ride through Amberly, uh, you'll see, in those townhomes, you'll see those air conditioners are kind of tucked back in, a little nook on the front of those front units. We've hidden those with landscaping. But on single-family homes, we've never put the air conditioning unit in the front. We have put them in the back before, and the feedback we get from buyers is, "I can't sit on my porch because the stupid air conditioner's running. It's making all this noise, and I can't enjoy just sitting on my porch." So, we run into issues there. Then, you know, the picture you saw with the air conditioning units both on the same side of the house and kind of really blocking that side up, I won't lie, we've had that before too, and it's a nightmare. And so, what we're trying to do is standardize more with our plans where air conditioning units go. And so, air conditioning units on our plans always go opposite side of the garage because most people want their gate to be, they fence their backyard, they want their gate to be on the garage side. They want to come out of the garage, go around the corner and go through their gate. So, we've tried to standardize it by putting them on the opposite side. We have a few plans that I just can't bring a line set down that wall because I've got kitchen cabinets or, or whatever, and I just can't get it, and it winds up. But we always try to avoid having them on the same side of the, of the house and the property line because of exactly what you see with that. But if we've got six-foot setbacks, eight-foot setbacks and ten-foot setbacks, that'll help, help alleviate, alleviate some of that. So, we would just ask that that condition be, be removed as, as well.
Drive, you, you mentioned Amberly. Why, why don't we see more developments like that? I get calls every week from people asking me to please talk to builders and get them to build something like that. They'd love to see it.
It's a townhome. I can't build a townhome in a PRD, in a neighborhood character area in accordance with what you're telling me on this one. That's where I've got to put that, is in a, in a master plan community. So, that's one of the reasons you're not seeing it. Another reason is that particular concept is very expensive to build. When it's good, it was good, but when it was bad, it was bad. And with a townhome like that, you have to start four at a time. I get a contract and one person wants to buy, I've got to start four to get that one person moved in. But what we're doing now is we're actually have a section in Crawford Creek that will be kind of targeted towards those, that same buyer, but they're detached. So, I can build them one at a time. But there'll be single-level houses with lawn maintenance and exterior maintenance all done by the association. So, that, that product is coming, but not as an attached product. And people will be shocked, they think they're moving down, they're going to sell their house and be spending the exact same thing for less square footage because of the cost. Um, so, we would like, we would like eight to be, eight to be removed. Um, Item Nine is talking about the ARB. Um, you know, we don't mind doing this, but what's going to happen is it's just going to be a, it's going to be a blank letter that, you know, just gets stuck with the plans. We're the builder and developer. We, we know what we're building. If we sell lots to somebody else, we're going to get their book of plans, and we're going to look at their plans before we even sell them lots, know what they're going to build. We want to be the ones that control that, not just have some meaningless piece of paper that gets turned in with a permit.
If somebody came in and, and bought you out, how would we be protected if something like that happened? Because I wonder if, if that condition is, is in there to protect us?
Let me ask you this. What in here says that it has to be any particular style or character? You know, it's a, it's a land use, not an architectural ordinance, it's land use. And so, we've kind of offset having to do all of that by the amount of parks and amenities and the things that we're doing. Um, if it gets bought out, it gets bought out at a high enough number that, you know, there's enough invested there, it's going to be done, it's going to be done right. Um, but it just, it just has, it, it's just something that's just going to be a piece of paper that now staff has to keep up with. You know, "Hey, I got this permit in, where's your ARB approval? Does this neighborhood have to have it, or does this one not have to have it?" You know, because not all of them have to have it. We, we pull permits all the time, and we've never had to turn in an ARB letter in any of the neighborhoods that we, that we've built in. There may be some out there, but we've never, we've never, never had to do it. Um, and then, Item Number Ten, we, we don't have a problem with that, um, unless townhomes aren't allowed. If townhomes aren't allowed, then I, I've got to, I've got to eliminate these parks because I got to find lots somewhere, uh, to get my density back. So, that would, but I don't have a problem with, uh, with, uh, at least four of each type. And we don't have a problem with doing that, uh, kind of identifying what that may be at the preliminary plat because we'd have done engineering at that point, know what that park's going to look like. So, those are our concerns on the conditions. Uh, we've met with staff and expressed those concerns already. Uh, so, they've heard all these comments, uh, before. But one of the things you face with on these, you know, it all, it all keeps moving, so it's a living, breathing project all the way up to the time we're standing in front of you. So, I know it's a lot to hear, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you've got.
Let's hypothetically say that the, uh, townhomes go away, and you're able to build houses on the area with the townhomes. What percent of the park goes away too? Half of it?
At least. You, you're talking about eliminating two hundred lots, um, that I can't replace in single-family.
But what would a townhome sell for versus a house?
Well, you know, everybody keeps, everybody keeps talking about what things cost. And in Columbia County now, on a new home, uh, you can't hardly buy a new home, single-family detached home for less than two hundred thousand dollars. Personally, everything we're building now on a fifty-foot lot up starts at two hundred thousand plus. So, to be under two hundred thousand on new construction, you're going to have to be in a townhome. And there's a few builders that can get to, get under two hundred, but most of us can't, uh, with what lot, lot prices are today. Lot prices now are typically running about a thousand dollars a front foot. If it's a fifty-foot wide lot, it's going to be a fifty thousand dollar lot. And if you do the math, typically, your lot is about twenty percent. So, you take fifty thousand times five, those are probably going to average two-twenty-five to two-fifty. So, to get under two hundred thousand, it has to be in a townhome product. So, that's the segment of the market we're trying to capture is that, that entry, entry-level buyer who wants to be in, in Columbia County can't afford to buy a new home that's over two hundred. And what we try to do is, is, people say, "Well, yeah, they can go buy a resale, or they can go buy this, or they can go buy that." But what we try to do is, we try to establish and sell a lifestyle. So, when you look at this neighborhood, you're not just looking at, hey, you can go buy a house for two-twenty-five, or you can go buy a townhome for one-seventy-five. You're buying the lifestyle. You're buying in that, "Hey, I've got walking trails everywhere, I've got a pool, I've got these activity fields, I've got pocket parks everywhere." It's being sold as a lifestyle, not just as a house.
All right, gentlemen, any questions?
The, the, the amount of green spaces, one of the things I really like about this, but that the houses so close together is problematic, all of them. All of them being, you know, six feet apart.
Right.
To me, takes away from, I've got this nice neighborhood full of parks, green space, nature trails, but, you know, I can blow out my neighbor's candle in his kitchen window. And that, that kind of, it personally deter me from wanting to, to, to look at the neighborhood because it's, it's something like where I live. I live in Tudor Branch, and we've got green and, and a few little pocket parks everywhere. That's really nice, but I can't hit my neighbor's kitchen candle with a baseball because we're so far apart.
Well, one thing to keep in mind is if you look at the top-selling neighborhoods in Columbia County now, they all have probably seven-and-a-half less setbacks. So, there are some that have bigger setbacks, but Crawford Creek, those are five-foot side setbacks. Canterbury Farms, um, when we did, did our section of Canterbury, those were all five-foot setbacks. Canterbury Farms was the number-one selling community for about seven or eight years running, till, till we started running out of lots. So, the market says, "As long as you've got these parks and other amenities, I can live with the closeness." And one thing you got to remember is, is not every house maximizes the lot width. So, if I've got a fifty-foot lot there and I've got side setbacks of six feet, that means I can have a thirty-eight-foot wide house. Well, I don't design every plan to be thirty-eight feet wide. I may have some that are thirty-eight, I may have some that are twenty-eight and everything in between. So, when you ride down the road, you're not seeing the same distance between every house. It does, it does vary. Um, and, and there are issues with building houses close together. The sod does die between them, so you can't always put sod between them. Sometimes you have to put plants. Sometimes you can't irrigate because if this neighbor irrigates and this neighbor irrigates, it creates a drainage issues. On all of ours, what we do is if the, if the swell slope is two percent or greater, you're good. If it's between two percent and one percent, you put a rock drain in. If it's less than one percent, you put the rock drain with a pipe and with catch basins. Make sure you've controlled that water and got it out. Now, we didn't decide that on day one. We learned a lot of lessons along the way to figure out, okay, this is what works. This is how we can eliminate our callbacks. We're having to go back and put them in after the fact. So, that's our standard operating procedure to deal with some of the issues that you run into when you build them close. You just have to know how to do it, figure it out. And we've, I mean, we've built hundreds of houses with, with these tight setbacks, and we know how to make it work. I, I have to have the density, I have to make those lots smaller just because of what it costs to put the infrastructure in, to deal with all the regulations. Not necessarily the regulations that Columbia County has put in, but regulations that are set at the federal level and pushed down to us. Um, it's very expensive to develop now, and it's, it's, that's why you're seeing so many of these neighborhoods like this is we have to get the density to be able to offset that cost.
The problem I've got with it is, we've got rules, as you well know about setbacks. And then, one time before, before I even came on the board, it was altered. And now, we make an attempt to alter it again, I think we're setting precedents. We've got to come with some way to have X feet, and I know it's not written in stone.
Right.
But we got to live with the rulers to play with them so much. And what we, I like your project, with the exception of the setbacks, because we just play them with something that's not in the book.
Right.
And that bothers me.
Well, I'll give you a little history on the setbacks. So, the setbacks used to be five feet. In Columbia County, your minimum setback was five feet. And it was set because of the fire code, because of the, the residential code was if you had a wall closer than five feet, it had to be fire-rated. So, five-foot was kind of the county said, "Well, we're going to make it five feet." And a lot of these developments started happening, the setbacks, and we were all learning back then. And so, there were some issues that came about, and the county said, "Time out, we need to study this." They put together a study committee of local citizens, builders, developers, engineers. It was a group of about fifteen or twenty people. And we looked at this issue for probably three or four months, meeting after meeting, discussion after discussion. Everybody came up with, it's seven-and-a-half feet should be what the, what the new minimum should be. And when it got, everybody was in agreement, but when it got to the Board of Commissioners, it was changed to ten feet. Ten feet became the minimum. But if you did things like this, you'd be allowed to reduce it. So, it was a way for the county to encourage better development versus saying, "Well, we're going to leave them at ten feet, and they're going to always be ten feet." Well, there was no carrot there to put in front of the developer to say, "Well, if you do a better job, then we will allow you to reduce your setbacks." So, that's what we've tried to do here, is do a better job by, by putting the parks in there, putting the open space in there, doing these things to justify, you know, the need for the, the reduced setback. So, you know, we're asking for it to go to seven-and-a-half feet, and then some of those to be reduced down to that, where we've gone a little bit over and above. What I'm offering is just maybe a compromise, and let's just say, "Hey, give me, on the, on the fifty-foot lots, give me six feet, and on the sixty-foot lots, make it eight feet, and on the seventy-foot lots, go to ten feet." That gives us a variety of setbacks in the neighborhood. Accomplishes one of the things that you want to see, and that is, "Hey, I'd like to see maybe a little bit more room between some of these houses," and that, that puts the room between them.
And we're setting the precedent by six feet to eight feet, et cetera, et cetera. I, there's a common ground somewhere, and I'm not smart enough to understand where. But I do know that I don't like the fact that it won't be out the door good before the word's out and some more be coming. And you know that as well as I do.
I do. And, but the county set the precedent in the beginning when they, when they approved it for Green Point. So, Green Point was the very first case, and that's the neighborhood at Pumpkin Center that, that Maybomb is developing. And they've done a great job, and, and they kind of went in and did the same thing we've done. They said, "Look, we've got parks, we've got open space, we've got all this stuff." The county said, "Okay, with that, we'll give you the reduced setbacks." And so, we're just basically coming in behind that and seeing, "All right, that's what we need to do to be able to do it." We've done that plus some, uh, to, to, to try to get our setbacks reduced as well. I don't disagree with what you're saying, Mr. Dempsey, that it, you know, make it a standard, whatever it is, all the way through. But at that point, there's no carrot to dangle in front of the developer to say, "Give me parks, give me this stuff, and then I'll let you reduce it."
Mr. Butler, do, does the language in the PRD ordinance allow you to be flexible with setbacks throughout the project? It's not, not a, it's not ten-eight-seven, it could be nine-point-two and eleven-point-one.
Whatever you want below ten feet, as long as it's justified. Nothing says it has to be a setback.
Nothing says it has to be a set, you're a fee for the entire development you want.
As opposed to R2?
Yeah, we, we, which has a specific, you must be at 10 feet.
Okay.
And you could do, you could do more than that. Sure, you could do 15 if you wanted, below the 10.
At Greenpoint, it was seven and a half. Did it go below seven and a half? I re, I recall, it was talked from taking it from 10 to seven and a half, but I don't recall going below seven and a half.
So the, the five feet. That report. So the condition there, uh, so that the, they could go below five feet or go to five feet. Portion, portion of the development achieve a unique and architectural character to the satisfaction of staff and the planning commission. Aspects of architectural neighborhood design that may provide justification for these smaller side setbacks include, we're not, not exclusive to detached or side or rear loaded garages. Garage setbacks significantly from the front plan of the house and front porches. This applies only to lots in front of park areas. So again, it gave them the ability to, when they came back at plating, if they had those things for, for those lots, they could then be awarded the five foot setback if they were front of parks.
Carrot.
That was the carrot.
I've got this question with that, you know, changing this to 70, 60, 50. Got a, you know, total number of 158 70-foot lots now.
Right.
Do that, is that, those, those numbers obviously will change or not?
They do. They go down because I've got to make the lot wider to accommodate the additional setback. So a 70-foot lot would probably have to go to a 76-foot wide lot. What we're trying to do now is, is add some cushion in there. You know, for the very thing that y'all hear tonight, that builders are getting caught when there's a, a setback at whether it's five feet, six feet, 10 feet. We're trying to push against that, you know, we're just going to get caught sooner or later. And so what we're trying to start to do is in our newer developments is if I'm looking at a, a 50-foot wide house and I've got 10-foot side setbacks, that's 70 feet, I really ought to make that lot 72 feet. Give me a little bit of cushion. So if I take a 70-foot lot, then it'll probably go to a 76-foot wide lot. Then, so if you take, take that, you'll probably lose about 13 lots or so with that. And that's without, you know, you got to look at how they all come in and where it goes. Could be more than that. You lose at least that many. So there's a loss in lots there, but we're willing to absorb that because it's not going to be a, a whole bunch of them compared to, to losing all the townhomes making the project work.
And how does, isn't there a limit on how many townhomes we can build in a year in Columbia County?
So there is a policy, not a limit, policy, 50 a year.
Policy.
But that's, that's, that can be approved, not built. You could build thousands of them if they're approved in the past. Um, again, policy, not a, a law.
And we typically on townhomes that we build, we, we usually sell three to four a month. So from a building standpoint, I'm not going to build 200 of them on day one. It's going to take.
Part of the phasing plan.
Part of the phasing. It's going to take a while to go through and, and get all those built. So, you know, this is a long-term project and build the townhomes and houses in there for a long time.
Yeah, the, the vision 2035 thing, I'm just totally disillusioned because this, you know, this is not part of that character, even though those do exist that you mentioned and predominantly every one of them preceded the current vision, which is going to be up for a little review and adjustment here, I think in a year or so. But if we say we're not going to build something because that's what the people wanted, I feel, you know, I don't feel like I should go against the will of the people, if you will.
Well, if you, if you look at the, uh, vision 2035 plan and you go to the neighborhood character area, talks about all these goals that they're looking to do to, to, you know, sustain the values in existing neighborhoods, to add to their character and not detract from them. If all my surrounding neighborhoods have townhomes, I'm not detracting from them for having townhomes in mine. The pictures that they show in that neighborhood character area are the cabins in Riverwood Plant, at Champions and a house in Bishop's Court. It's just not, I mean, that's a very small segment of what's built in Columbia County. It's not representative of neighborhood character area that you see in Columbia County. Um, you know, those are three quarters of a million dollar houses. You know, that's just not, the bulk of the market in Columbia County is 250,000. That's just where the meat of the market is. We go out here and say, well, we're only going to build 500,000, 750,000 dollar houses. We can all go home because it's just not going to be enough volume there to support any of us. But the place it does mention townhomes in the, uh, in the activity area, right? Was that right? Was it the activity character area?
Activity areas.
It talks about a mixed use area. And, and in my mind, if I'm, if I'm looking at, at, at a townhome development in those mixed areas, then it's probably going to be a standalone townhome development. It's, it's more likely to be, you know, something that could turn into rentals or not, maybe not as desirable from a maintain standpoint because there's nothing, it's just them. There's no other master association around them to hold them accountable. But when I look at Columbia County and I see, uh, what's out there, it just seems to me the ones that are done in master plan developments look, look much nicer. There's a few exceptions, but that's, that's the.
Yeah, my daughter lives in Creek Walk.
Yeah.
They, they do a good job in there.
Yeah, I know Christian's got something. He's building on Furious Ferry and those, those look real nice too. Uh, there's, there's, there's exceptions, but all, you know, but what we heard through all the, and I served on the vision 2035 steering committee. I was there. I don't think anybody picked up that there was, weren't going to be able to have townhomes in a neighborhood character area. Cause we looked at the map and everything that was shaded in neighborhood character were neighborhoods that have townhomes in them. So nobody picked up that they weren't going to be allowed, but it did.
Your contention is that that is the character of the area.
It's, it's the, it's the character of the area that's there now.
None of the folks that live in Amberly love it.
Right.
I like my setback.
Right.
So it's what, what your flavor is, I guess.
Gentlemen, do we have any other questions? Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right, uh, if there's nobody else that'd like to come forward, uh, I'll close the public hearing. And gentlemen, we need a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion for RZ 190803 to deny as it is, be sent back to the department for setbacks. I just, I, I don't like this of charging him to Greenpoint and now it's coming the second time. It just won't be the last we'll see. We've got to draw a line somewhere. That's my motion.
You're second.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? So you would like to see this go back to the drawing board and, and, uh, and the setbacks be changed?
Yes, sir, to do with the setbacks because we're just going to keep on going down a deep hole if we don't.
Any other comments? All in favor to deny? All opposed? Okay, motion to deny carries five zero. So we got the conceptual plan for Galloway Trail. Butler.
So the question now is that we've, we requested to deny the, the application. Uh, the concept plan is attached to that application. We can go through or we can just say we will also deny it as well? Or we can say.
Why don't we just have a motion to withdraw that for future consideration? Withdraw without prejudice.
You could table it. What you could do, if you table it, uh, that's, that was our original recommendation with it. If you table it, I would say table it to the first meeting in November. Gives the opportunity for the board of commissioners to change, change anything.
But if we withdraw without prejudice, we accomplish the same thing and don't put a timetable on it.
Could do that too. Now he has to, uh, agree to withdraw without prejudice.
Okay. Mr. Ivy, would you like to withdraw without prejudice or table or? How would, what would you like us to do on that?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Basically you voted to deny, so does that give me the right to even come back with a different alternative?
This would go to the board of commissioners.
Exactly.
And you can negotiate with them about how you want to change this. So I gue, I guess tabling.
So again, I would, what I would do, uh, this is going to the 15th, uh, the, the October 15th planning, our board commissioners meeting. If they do something different with it, um, you could table it to the, the November 7th planning commission meeting, which then if there is an approval with conditions or what have you, if it's still alive at that point, um, then it can come back to you all for the concept plan.
Okay, if, let's say, let's say we table this. The commissioners work out something with you for their next meeting. They don't have a concept plan to go with, so should Mr. Ivy be able to negotiate the concept plan along with whatever he wants?
You saw the zoning in the concept. They're two separate things, but they are linked.
Yeah.
So what you can do is you can negotiate the zoning with the concept still kind of in limbo.
Okay.
And if it changes from the board commissioner, let's say they say you, you can only have 100 townhouses. Then that changed, the condition would then be applied to the zoning, your concept chan, your concept plan is going to change no matter what. And so again, I swear, if you go ahead and table it, then you can, you know, address it in the first meeting in November or the second. It gives you time to work on whatever was agreed to with the board commissioners. But again, I think November 7th probably works again if it needs to be tabled again.
So I kind of thought that's what we were sending it back for redraw.
It's going, it's go, it'll go to the board of commissioners and Mr. Ivy.
As a denial, right?
As a denial, but Mr. Ivy will have an, an opportunity to work with the commissioners to see if he can get them in a position where they would approve what he submits. As opposed to us approving and the commissioners having those set of conditions. Okay, so.
Only question I had on the concept plan is if, if something is worked out with the board of commissioners and on October 15th, something was approved then.
Concept plan would, would have to be altered to include whatever's agreed to.
Right.
Comes back.
Is there any kind of advertising period or what's the, from the time I turned it in?
Concept plan.
The next meeting?
Yeah, that, we, we would want it to be on the next meeting if possible, but again, it's a concept plan. There's no advertising requirement for it.
We're fine whether you table it to a later meeting or withdraw without prejudice, fine too.
Which, which would work?
I would table it, not withdraw because I was have a question. Does he have an attached concept plan anymore? I would say he doesn't.
Okay, all right, got it. Okay, so.
November 7th.
So November 7th, okay. Motion to table until November 7th, the conceptual plan for the Galloway Track.
I'll make the motion.
You're second.
Second.
Okay, okay. Question, all in favor? Motion to table passes five zero to, uh, move to November 7th. All right, Ms. Mystery, file 190907.
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is, uh, tabled from the September 5th meeting and its location is 42, 4218 Old Lincoln Road. It's 4.77 acres and the current zoning is C2, general commercial and S1 special. The request is for S1 special and major S1 revision. This is the location plan off Old Lincoln Road. It's close to the lake. Here's a zoning map. Surrounding zoning is R4 with some S1. It's close up of the aerial and it shows the existing, um, store with the boats, which is for maintenance and storage of boats. The site photograph. And the initial submittal of the site plan showed the existing facility with a proposed gravel expansion area at the back of that. And that was tabled at your last meeting for more information on the site plan and buildings and how that layout is going to work. This is the revised concept plan. Shows the, uh, proposed buildings, about six buildings. Um, they're facing inward and the storage of boats will be in the gravel yard in between. Goes a 30-foot, um, undisturbed buffer around the perimeter of that to create more of a privacy area for the grounding residents. And there's a, a rendering at the top which shows the type of storage building that will be, um, built there. This clo, a close-up of the, um, proposed building design. And this is the existing adjacent site. Future land use map shows that this is in the rural area close to the lake. And the applicant's request was C2 to S1 and a major S1 revision. And after reviewing the revised, uh, site plan and narrative, staff recommends approval with conditions for the revision to S1 zoning, which the health department will be contacted for the onsite sewage system. And from the planning side, the minimum side and rear setbacks will be 40 feet on the west and south sides of the property. There will be buffers that are undisturbed and supplemented as needed. And lighting will be shielded and directed away from the adjacent residential properties with a photometric plan. And staff recommends disapproval request for the C2 to S1 as the applicant has requested that they would like to keep the C2 zoning at the front part of the site as it is.
Gentlemen, any questions of staff?
Was there the setback 30 feet in the original narrative?
So on, on this one, this plan just showed a 35-foot undisturbed buffer, but there wasn't any setbacks listed for buildings. So that's why the staff conditioned for a 40-foot setback, which would allow space between the buffer and the building.
So don't, don't change. That says 30 feet.
Right, this is the revised concept.
Who, the revised concept says 30 feet, but the condition says 40 feet. Which is it?
The, the setback is 40 feet, but the buffer is.
Setback with the buffer. I got you. Thank you.
So there's a 10-foot space between the building and the.
I got you.
Any other questions? Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Would you like to come forward and give us any additional information you'd like us to?
My name is Nicholas Costello and I was here on September the 3rd to try to get this rezoned. Already zoned as a S1 open storage. We're trying to get it to be covered, closed storage. You can go back to that one drawing. I don't know how to switch. This right here was done in 2011. It was rezoned by the original owner. This is not anything that I've drawn. It was already approved through the county commission and you guys. And he had 35-foot buffers. I don't know why he had that. But my, um, buffers are 30 feet. And the county recommended doing a 40-foot, basically a buffer with a 10-foot variance. Get her, I guess, to get around the building. And I don't have a problem with, uh, space between the buffer and the building as of course, grass and stuff will be getting in the gutters and we need to be able to clean those out. But moving those buildings and with 40-foot, uh, minimizes my area that I have. That's why there's no drawings on here that show the actual spacing of the buildings. It might not be all of these buildings that get put there. We will not know until we get the topos and the architectural stuff done from J and L to where exactly each building is going. I do know, we're hoping to put this very first building in right here. It'd be up against the core property. I've spoke with the core and met with them and basically they told me I could build right on their property line. Um, I know from having a lake house, you don't want to do that because they can be off a little bit. So I told them, you know, five feet, something like that, and they're fine with that. So this building would actually be right up against this line. That would be the first building and then two years from there, I'm hoping to build maybe another building back here. I just don't know yet. So speaking with Danielle, she said to put all these buildings on here just so there's no future problems later on. We don't even know if this covered area right here will be there. But like I said, we get the topos done with J and L and we can get all the spacing spaced out correctly so people can get in and out of here. I said the 40-foot setback they're proposing, I'm just asking that that be eliminated.
That's on the side and the rear. Um, that is on here and here.
Yep.
I would say it doesn't really apply to that one, in my opinion.
And then again.
It would only apply to what?
Here and here. This has always been understood that there wouldn't be a, you know, anything on that side of the property.
More buffer where, where the residences are.
Yeah, and I have, um, spoke with Robertson's. They live right about here. But yeah, that is their house. And they have a privacy fence that runs right here. And you can't see it because all this is covered up, but about this much space, basically open. Got a little bit of underbrush and stuff, but from about here back is all fully wooded. And I've agreed to plant, you know, cypress type trees there. Cause I understand they want their privacy and I don't have a problem with that. Now there is an entrance that is right here to the existing C2. Um, I would not be covering that. Case of some type of emergency or something like that, it's always been put in there as an egress, egress, ingress, egress. So this. So, this C two is basically off the table. And I'm hoping you guys aren't gonna require me to put all that stuff in there, but I'm willing to maintain. If we're gonna basically fence this whole area in for security purposes, thirty foot buffer and in any gaps that you may see, we'll fill them in. I don't have a problem with that. There will be a security fence right here for people coming in and out. There is a street light on this property and there's one that they just took down from Georgia Power that was right there. Because it was the old style orange ones and they're gonna come back and put the LEDs in there. So, and on the light on the buildings, there'll be low impact wall mounts, photo cells. So, when people do put in, pull in here and they pull up to their little dock, the lights will come on.
Motion sensor.
Motion sensor, yes. And the same with the gate, when they pull up to the gate, the motion sensors will come on. There was a concern with the traffic and stuff at the last meeting about people coming in and out of here all night long. Only people that I know that go fishing early in the morning are in and out all night long are bass fishermen and they don't generally keep their boats in storage. They take them home, put all their bass gear in there so they can, you know, leave four o'clock in the morning, be done. Most of this stuff is pleasure boating and you're looking eight to five, the exception to some fishermen that might wanna go fishing late at night. But traffic in and out all night long is not gonna be an issue. Also, there were some concerns with the citizens or neighbors of the community, there was a whole bunch of oil and contamination that was dumped on the site. We've had a phase one and two study done on the site. The EPA showed up on September the ninth from an anonymous complaint from a citizen saying there was a whole bunch of oil dumping on that site. They couldn't find anything. You can go on the EPA's website and look up their findings and what they found was minimal for twenty, a facility that's been there for twenty years, which was staining on, on the concrete from oil. That's all that they found. So, that's was, I know that was a big concern with a couple of the citizens. Do you guys have any more questions? Hopefully, we'll answer them for you.
Gentlemen, any questions? Alright, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Nicholas. Was your momma named Net?
Yes, sir, she was.
I grew up with her.
She, she was supposed to be here tonight, but she's had foot surgery, so she didn't make it tonight.
Can you go back to the previous, so, the demarcation between the two properties, is that, what is that, an egress? Why is there a line between?
Here?
No, there's an opening.
Oh, something like this?
An easement.
Oh, an easement. There's an eas, is this an easement?
You go down the, on the bottom of the property?
Can't draw.
Come on, this?
Yeah.
So, that's the property at the back, let me go to the other. Yeah, so that's the access point.
But where does, where does the property, where does their property start and, and his property? Is there a, a distance between the two properties?
Yes, I.
One starts and one stops?
Yeah, I believe it's about thirtyish feet, give or take.
So, that's an easement?
No, that's his property. You have the properties back here and then it has, it's a flag lot, so it had, the lot goes the whole way up here and has, it has road frontage. Not an easement.
So, it's, it's an egress?
No, it, it, yes, it's an egress to the street. Now, there, there is an easement on top of it, I will say that, at forty two, for forty two sixteen, they have an easement that goes through there.
That's thirty foot wide.
It looks like it.
Plus or minus?
Plus minus.
There's a fence that is, alright, so the fence is right here on the C two property. And then the power line goes in between here and we just had the property marks, it's hard to draw on this map, but we just had the property marks redone by the surveyors. And so, the original proposal in 2011 proposed coming through the property. What he did not state was, when the original owner back in nineteen ninety one had all this done, he had an easement put right here for this exact same thing. But the owner, written owner Chris Chapel, was gonna come through here to make access back there. Speaking with Will and Danielle, we decided to take this driveway that was gonna be here and put it up here so that it wouldn't hamper the, the neighbors here or here. It would basically move the driveway out of their view and not have boats coming in and out of there all night long, which is not gonna be the case, but. So, that's why we moved the driveway up there for the suggestion of Will.
Other questions? Alright, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Yes, sir. Please give us your name and home address.
My name is Michael Jansen, my home address is ten eleven Shoals Drive in Athens. I'm the CEO and J and R Marine Holdings. We own the property next to it, no, we don't own it, we lease it, Corps of Engineers. Let me start by saying that we welcome Mr. Costello and his boat dealership. We believe that having another boat dealer next to us is positive, brings us more boaters to the area, which will be good for our business. We believe that competition is good because it makes everybody better. US Army Corps of Engineers established certain marina locations around on Lake, Lake Clarksville. We leased one of those locations and we serve Columbia County and the surrounding communities. Our lease requires us to pay Corps of Engineers for, based on our income. I have three points of concerns I'd like to share with you guys. First is limited launch capacity, second is environmental safety, and the third is residential buffer. We hit one hundred percent storage capacity this year with our existing facility and are in the process of developing additional wet and dry storage for the 2020 season. All our facilities on the property are built, paid for, and maintained by us. We're, when the lease ends, everything that's not mobile goes with the, goes to the new leasing. This includes the launch ramps, so the investment on new launch ramps must make economic sense. We're just putting it in the ground, we can't take it with us. We currently have one public ranch, public ramp with very limited vehicle, trailer parking, and limited staging dock storage on the water. Staging dock, dockage on the water. Additional ramps are an expensive, time-consuming process and with all the regulations that affect shoreline improvements, there's no guarantee that you'll get those when you try to go. Our concern, and I want to state this carefully, so as to not be accused of making veil threats, is a simple economic concern, one of supply and demand.
So, the gentleman you sent last time told you exactly what I said.
I watched the, I watched the hearing, sir. So, it's a simple economic concern, one of supply and demand. You can only launch so many boats in one hour and on weekends and holidays, demand for the current launch ramp, just among our storage customers, is already high. As I stated earlier, we are planning for additional storage. We cannot, however, add more dry storage than we can handle launches in the time that we have available to launch boats. There is a delicate balance that we must maintain for our customers. Adding a large amount of storage right beside our marina will dramatically increase demand for the ramp and limited parking. As demand, as demand for the use of the boat ramp increases, our only economically sound remedy is to increase the rates we charge to launch boats. This will encourage the demand from those boats that are not our storage customers to seek less expensive ramps. This is information that we're, we're not required to share, but in the spirit of transparency, I hope that those involved will appreciate having this knowledge. Again, it's just, it's a supply and demand thing. Boat ramps typically cost about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to put in. At five dollars a launch, it takes a long time to get your money back. Almost impossible in the timeframe that we have. So, that's, that's.
About a ten year lease or twenty five year?
Twenty five year lease.
Twenty five.
So, that's just, just to provide some feedback as far as, you know, what our concerns are with having the additional storage outside of the facility. Right, not, not outside the facility, you can build storage wherever you want to and, and we're not opposed to that and we're not opposed to him doing it. We're just sharing that that information is that, you know, we're in business to make profit too and we have to control the limited resource that we have the best we can.
Can I, can I ask you, as someone who doesn't own a boat?
Yes, sir.
Know people that do. Average knowledge. If, if I was a boat owner and I was able to store that boat at my home, your occupancy increases.
Yes, sir.
I'm just an average boat owner that always launches my boat at your ramp, the fee every time I come.
Sure.
Is there a point where I show up and you say, you can't come in?
There's not a point that I say you can't come in, there's a point that I say you probably won't come in because you won't want to pay the ramp fee.
You can't pick and choose the ramp fee?
Oh, yes, we can, we absolutely can.
You can charge your people less than what you charge his?
No, our ramp fee, ramp fees for our storage customers are included in storage, in the price they pay for storage.
You couldn't get ridiculous on the other side.
Well, the.
I wouldn't think.
I can't get ridiculous, but again, it's a limited, it is a limited resource.
What it sounds like to me is a veil threat to keep it back.
I'm just being honest.
Well, I'm gonna be honest with you too, I'm, you know, I'm, 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 you know, this is the second time we're being accused of making veil threats.
I'm just telling you why, how I feel, I'm not trying to be a smartass about it.
I can, I can tell you why I said it before is because your young man that you sent up there said, well, has he gone over the economic things and we've bought this and does he know what it takes to go into business and that kinda thing?
He wasn't as, wasn't as political savvy as you are.
Listen to me, I, I.
I would agree with that.
I understand and I'm, and again, if, if Mr. Costello wants to build boat storage.
Because.
Fine, I can't stop him and, and, and I don't wanna stop him. I don't wanna stop any, look, I'm a small business owner, I love small business, I love the idea of somebody doing this. I am excited to have a boat dealership there, okay?
He's ten minutes from Cherokee Creek anyway.
Well, the, the thing that we can't do as a body is we can't get in to the financial viability of, of, of something or the capacity. All we can do is look at a piece of property and say, yes, that, that fits the code or no, it doesn't.
Okay, I, I, and, and I get it.
And honestly, that, that's really as far as we should go. Now, sometimes, you know, because everybody up here has different experiences, you know, sometimes we try to give wise counsel to folks, but, but honestly, we try to stay away from that and stay with what is either in the code or not in the code. Advise the commissioners and then they can make whatever decision that they'd like.
Right.
They can go outside the code, they can do whatever they want to, but our job is to try to stay as close to the code as we can and decide whether something is a viable use or not.
And I understand and I'd hope you guys take this in the vein of wise counsel and not a veil threat. It's not a veil threat, it's, it's just the, the, the facts of what it is, when you have limited resources and, and you're in control of those resources.
Well, there's other land that's not very far from there.
Well, can I ask you, you know, four and a half years ago, you guys came with a really big plan of build more slips, you were gonna build dry storage, there was gonna be forklifts, there was a restaurant. And, and I've been out there a couple of times since then, because I was quite honestly excited about it, thinking about buying a boat, something's close to my house. And all I saw was the same thing, it was cleaned up, I'll give you credit for that, but I didn't see anything change.
Well, I can assure you.
So, why haven't you, why haven't you moved on the plan that you presented?
We absolutely have moved on with the plans. I believe back in 2015, the docks, the docks were there. When we bought the property, when we got, when we got the lease from the property, there were no docks there.
Correct.
There were no docks there, the previous leasing had taken the docks and took them someplace else on this lake. So, we put docks there, we put brand new, a brand new fuel dock there, we put in a brand new fuel system there. We've renovated, we built and, we created, built a, a store there, we've built showers and public restrooms there.
Did you all clean up the old rental places they had there that were?
Tore them down, we got rid of the old store, got rid of all that. We converted the existing dry stack to a boat sales facility there. We've, great, we've, we've done a lot, hundreds of thousands of dollars there. Look, I'm, we, we've done this in, in a number of locations and one of my first ones, I was a believer in that if you build it, they will come. And I spent three and a half to five million dollars building something. We just recently got that facility full, okay? That was back in 2012. So, I've learned my lesson of going in and spending that much money to build, I'm, now I'm to the point of if they come, I will build it.
And, and I asked.
And, and we have.
I'm sorry, sir, I asked the question and I, and I led you in this, but I, I think in the interest of time, I think we're talking about what we're voting on.
Could I ask you to wrap up your other points?
Okay.
Quickly.
Alright, so, and, and Mr. Costello addressed this one, but I'm gonna go ahead and state it anyway. But as environmental concerns, as the US Army Corps of Engineering, we undergo safety and environmental inspections at least annually to ensure we're operating a safe and environmentally responsible business. This is critical, especially considering we operate near a residential area. At the last meeting, one of the neighbors mentioned that they had some environmental concerns on the property in question. And I see from the notes from tonight's meeting that Mr. Costello has had phase one, phase two environmental assessments done on the property. Because of the concerns of the neighbors and the amount of land disturbance that will be, that will take place to create this new boat storage if you approve it and the risk of airborne solvents and other chemicals, I would suggest that the board request copies of the environmental assessments be made public as this process to alleviate the concerns of the neighbors for their safety.
And that wouldn't be something we deal with in zoning, that would be something the commissioners would have to add, would that be correct, Mr. Butler?
So, you, you could request a condition be added to do that.
Okay.
That would, that's all acceptable, we definitely know it before, solar farms, for example.
Right.
So, you, you could do that.
I just think it'd be, it'd be helpful for the neighbors to understand, we're a neighbor, we've got employees that are out there working and it'd be nice for us to know that we don't have to worry if there's dust being kicked up by construction. Final point I'd like to make is that when, when we had our, our zoning approved here back in September 2015, you moved the board, we were required to have a forty foot non-natural buffer that we couldn't disturb where our property abuts residential parcels. In the spirit of fairness and good neighbors and considering that a person's home is their largest investment, I request the same forty foot buffer be required for this reason. So do. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak.
We do have the extra.
Buffer's already there, are gonna be there.
Is that right? His requests is to increase it to forty feet.
Right, on the side with the residences.
Buffer, not the setback.
Okay, alright, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that'd like to speak either for or against? Yes, sir, please come forward.
I will, KACOS, three one three three Ramsgate Road.
Tell your last name, please.
K A C O S. I think it's really important to note that with the current zoning, can we go back a couple slides? So, with the current zoning and with, with what they've approved.
You can draw on that, that monitor.
Oh, yeah, sorry. With what they approved, with the gravel lot in there, he can come in and have this whole area look just like this with all those boats. Mr. Costello wants to put in nice storage, more attractive for the, for the community, for Columbia County, and not have it look like that.
Right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak either for or against? Yes, sir.
My name is Richard Proudy, P R O U T Y, one oh five Mayfield Court. I am for this development, one project manager engineer with Colkey Construction. Mr. Costello and I have been talking, we have gone the routes of done our due diligence with the local engineers. So, this is a design that's in concept stages right now that wants, hopefully this gets rezoned for him to go from uncovered storage to simply covered storage. Then it will go into design phases and then we will constantly be working with Columbia County as far as codes, technical setbacks, so on and so forth. I just think this is, you look at the property now, it's been vacant for some years now. This is obviously a land improvement. Here again, it ups property value nearby facilities. I understand the boat launch, but here again, that's generating more revenue. So, and they're not the only, they're not the only boat land, uh, launch in the area. I mean, there's, can launch a boat fifty times over within a mile from there. So, I, and as far as the, the EPA, EPD complaints or possible spills, he has done his first and second round of due diligence to prove that it's not contaminated soils. And then once this is, comes out of design and goes into construction and permits, that's something that'll also be monitored. So, I'm, personally, I think this is a great asset to the community just because it's, it's just, it's just an upbringing and it's gonna make everything a lot nicer.
It is a nice soil like it looks, everything be an improvement.
It is definitely a nice soil and this is simply, like I said, he is owned now, go out there and store boats out there now. But out of common courtesy for the neighbors, we want it covered storage. So, and it's gonna be done the right way through professional, general contractor and through professional engineers and designers. So, and it's gonna be done the right way through professional general contractor and through professional engineers and design teams. So it's not something that Mr. Costello has just taken off on himself and so he's, he's acquired a team to help him do this.
Thank you, sir. And with that, I'm gonna close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to.
Actually, we've got, we've got a couple of motions. We've got the C two, the S one, which staff is recommending disapproval. So we'd need approved, deny or to table, uh, for the C two to S one. Second would be the S one, they're recommending approval with conditions. So we'd need the second part to be S one to approve, deny or to table, and if you approve it with conditions. I have added.
Specific conditions?
The, the conditions that are listed in the, in the, in the narrative.
Okay, let's see if we can do this correctly. On RZ nineteen oh nine oh seven, I make a recommendation that we deny the zoning from C two to S one. Is that correct?
Sir, that's the first half, if that's your motion.
That's my motion.
If we have, this is, this would be a two-part motion.
You can break it up if you want.
We can break it up?
Yeah, that's fine. I was just doing that at this point.
Okay, so we do have, so do we have a second?
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Any, any, uh, discussion on that? All in favor to deny the C two to S one? Passes five zero. Sir, would you like to have at the second half of the motion?
Yes, if I can figure out the proper way to say it. On RZ nineteen oh nine oh seven, I would recommend approval. Age S one special revision for boat dealership, RV boat paying storage to, what?
S one.
S one.
Prove, you want to include the conditions with that?
Including conditions.
Okay, good. Go here a second.
Uh, can I, uh?
Add the environmental?
Add, ask to.
Okay, two, one.
Add that environmental.
Would the environmental happen, is that something that we can require to happen yearly or will that happen when the plan comes in for a review and they, they get their permit?
It would happen when it comes in for a review. Um, we're not gonna get into requiring a phase one, two every year. That's.
Okay, so that's gonna happen regardless?
But if you apply a condition, it will happen.
If we apply the condition, but if you don't apply the condition, it won't. Okay, alright. So would the gentleman like to amend his motion to include that?
And that the condition would be applied.
I have a second, uh, request to amend the addition from forty-foot setback to a thirty-five-foot setback.
I go along with that form of motion.
I second that.
Question? So we're gonna approve the S one with conditions. We're gonna add the condition of the, uh, the, uh, environmental check and we're gonna reduce the setbacks on the residential sides from forty to thirty-five feet. And the second still holds with that motion, okay? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries five zero. Alright. Mr. Butler, are you handling the massage?
Looks that way.
Tonight, alright?
So you, you have two massage operators licensed before you this evening. Yeah, the first one is Connie Alice Roundtree, DBA Connie Roundtree Massage Therapy. She's doing business at thirty-eight oh one Washington Road, Suite B. Is on-premise and mobile massage services. This is the same location approved for additional use for massage at the October first Board Commissioners Meeting. You want to take these both at one time or take them individually?
Well, I'm taking both.
Second one is.
Commissioners are good with that.
Mm-hmm. Second one's Catherine Keaton, DBA Katie Keaton Medical Massage at thirty-eight, thirty-eight oh one Washington Road. She's also on-premise and mobile massage services. Uh, both these applicants meet the requirements of the massage operator's license. Both are state licensed and also have additional use.
Gentlemen, any questions? Motion to approve, deny or to table?
Chair, I move to approve the massage operator's license for Catherine Keaton and Connie Roundtree.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries five zero. Alright, Mr. Butler, we've got a couple of, uh, temporary uses for information only. Would you just like to go ahead and go through those?
Yeah, I'll just go through.
Those three?
Quickly since we're a little late in the evening. Uh, so the first one is thirty-three, forty-one Log Deck Way. This is actually a renewal for a construction trailer. Uh, the construction trailer was approved on September seventeenth, twenty nineteen. The location of the property, they're actually building the hotel on that parcel there, but they own both parcels and are putting the actual trailer on this parcel. This is on the property currently zone, planning unit development. Air review of the site, there's nothing shown. It's actually, it was under construction. Anyhow, the Abbott Hotel on, on the Northern property and the truck trailer was placed here. Uh, they're likely to be done with this by December. It'll be going away by end of the year. Second one is temporary use at five forty-four North Bel Air Road. This is temporary storage, uh, for Cracker Barrel. Location of the property, and they're all familiar with Cracker Barrel, on North Bel Air Road. Only zone C two, has everything around it. The location of the, of stores, um, is actually Conex Box back here. They actually needed to store all their, uh, Christmas gifts, so apparently sold quite a few of them. That was approved on September twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen. The last TUA of the evening is at four thirteen Town Park Boulevard. It's a construction trailer for Duckworth Development. They're on a planned unit development. This is the location of it, Town Park, planned unit development. Case of it is just to the north of the property. Uh, they're about to have a, a medical office under construction here. That was approved on September twenty-third, twenty nineteen. Alright, moving into conceptual plan. This is a concept plan on Wrightsboro Road. Uh, it's twenty-six lots on one hundred fifty-five point one acres. A property is currently zone RA, residential agricultural. This is the location of the property, again, on the south side of Wrightsboro Road. Uh, you do have the city of Harlem moving northward, uh, up, up, up Appleton Harlem Road. Again, all property around it is zone RA. Air review of the site. Also the existing site, uh, showing the topography and also some of the wetlands and other environmental areas on the site. And the concept plan. So this is one's a little different. Um, in RA, you are allowed to have a development that has, um, gravel roads. But these gravel roads that are shown here, also here, um, are not gonna be county roads. They are private roads, um, they're, because they're built with, uh, with gravel. But again, you do have, the, uh, the requirement is all lots to be over five acres. Uh, this concept plan meets those requirements. Uh, there are a few comments from other departments. Staff is recommending approval of the concept plan for Conell Farms.
Okay. Gentlemen, any questions? This is not a public hearing, so we need a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the conceptual plan for Conell Farms.
Do I hear a second?
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries five zero. Butler, preliminary plat for Highland Lake Section one A and one B.
This is a preliminary plat on six, seven and a half acres. Uh, currently zone R two for a hundred sixty-nine lots. Located on Winifield Parkway, again, kind of on the, um, south side-ish of Winifield Parkway. Again, adjacent to Manole Valley. Uh, right-hand side of this photo. This is a preliminary plat of the, of the property. Uh, one of the things that's interesting with this, you may notice there are no, um, retention ponds. They're actually using a little used method of, the, the water goes down to the creek here. It's, goes by quick enough that it doesn't require any ponds. I'm not gonna get into the explanation of that because I don't really know. Uh, but it is kind of, it is an interesting way of doing it. I thought it was really, really wild. Our stormwater guys have been dealing with that quite a bit.
I think they call that the old way.
It, it is the old way, but again, it's one that's hasn't been seen very often. Uh, staff is recommending approval of the preliminary plat.
Gentlemen, it's not a public hearing. Are there any questions for staff? Not, I'll need a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the preliminary plat, plat for Highland Lake Section one A, one B.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Approved carries five zero. Mr. Butler, individual plat for Upland Farms.
No, sir, this is a request for a, a large individual plat, uh, seventy-three point two eight nine acres. Uh, currently it's split zone RA and R one. Request is for thirteen lots. Again, this doesn't have to go through consent because there's no public infrastructure created at all, no water lines, nothing. This is the location of the property on the south side of White Oak Road, just outside of Appleton. Again, the zone of the property, you can see here, it does have, it does kind of split, it's split into, um, you have RA here and R one on the, on this side of the property. Air review of the site again, undeveloped. And the, the plat itself, again, you have thirteen total lots, uh, that range across a wide, a wide, a wide, a wide range of sizes. Uh, you do have one, um, uh, easement that's being put back here to, to access these three lots at the back. But all, all the lots will also, well, all, all the lots have, um, road frontage on the rest of, on the rest of the, on the two roads there. And again, it's ever, it's approval of the individual platform, Upland Farm.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions to staff? Not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve Upland Farms.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Question? All in favor? Motion to approve carries five zero. I'd like to take a point of personal privilege and take a two-minute break. Right back.
You show up on time, we wouldn't have to take breaks. Hey, Christian.
I'm not judging.
Oh, okay.
All game.